What's meat about? It was talking with that.
Mr. Brown, you want to go?
Well, I'd like to know what the meat's about, just explain that part.
It's a, it's concerning the ordinance about sleeping on the benches at certain times. The ordinance, regular ordering or sleeping on public sidewalks, streets and benches.
I'll go ahead and speak.
Okay.
My name is Erin Evans and I've been a community member here for nine years, but I've had the honor of serving the Church Mouse Ministries for about four years. I sit on the board for them and I can speak on their behalf to say that we do give quite a bit to the homeless community. However, I think that I would be in favor of that ordinance. I'm a mother of three kids and they are asking a lot of the time, why is this person sleeping on a bench? And it really opens up a lot of personal conversations that I have with my kids and not necessarily negative, but I do think that with this ordinance in place, it might help on a small scale, but I urge everyone to look into different types of solutions because this isn't just a one, you know, solution kind of thing. I think that there is almost an umbrella of other issues and it stems from possibly addiction or mental health disorders and how this person came to end up on that bench. And I think it's very easy for us to look at them and think of them as an eyesore or a threat and they may be that, a threat to themselves or a threat to the community or the public. But I think overall, I know this might be a topic for another conversation or another meeting, but I would be very in favor of working with whoever I could to share resources about grant funding for, you know, this, this huge issue that is just wreaking havoc across this whole area. So I agree with it, but I also think that it needs to shed light on a much bigger issue of why this is happening in our community. Thank you.
Well. Janahan?
Yeah, my Janahan, yeah. First off, I brought my son with me today. He's fifteen. Then you asked people that are present to speak. Maybe reading, which we're going to speak about, so we know exactly what the whole verbiage is so we can comment on it. And I've got a career in law enforcement. I've worked with Trump with some there. There's a lot of, there are a lot of factors that go into things like that. But if what you're talking about is, is the bench? Yeah, I agree with the general principle we're going with it. But I'd like to, I'd like to hear the words.
Yeah, he's going for any call.
Right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, after reading this, I, uh... Let's see, are we talking about that? Whether it's gonna fix, it's not gonna fix, there's so many factors, but I think it's a good start. And the idea of having somebody there that, you know, for me, if it was one of my kids or somebody I know or somebody down there, whether the person has all these other factors that are in there and that's why they're in that position, that doesn't fix it. Those are the things, like getting in the, they're more happy to see them and stuff like that and see what we can do, uh, to get them off the bench, loitering, all that mess. We need to have it in there, get it replaced, make it in there. If they're not there, I think it's a good thing, it's a good start. It's not gonna fix the homeless problem, but it might make the streets a little better. It's right here trying to do stuff for the community and, you know, having a summer camp and then on the bench for three weeks, probably not that big deal. So I, I think it's a good direction and I'm, I'm logic goes on.
Would like to go with me, Chris.
I'm Martha Sadey, I'm from, my name's Amanda August. And I work with the rest of the coalition. And I understand that this lady has been sleeping on the bench, but she feels like this is a safe place because a lot of bad things happens to her. And I know this is the truth. She felt safe because other people had eyes on her and they protected her and somebody was trying to hurt her again. So I don't like the fact that somebody has to be arrested just because they're sleeping in the safe place. I think that we should have shelters or sign helping to take them. And I think we should look at all that before we take them to jail. There are twenty-five to thirty people that we see every week that they're not sleeping on the bench because they don't have a home. They're under bridges, they're behind dollar stores, sleeping on the ground, under eighteen, ten, under five, six, wherever. Understand, they are outside, but they're there. These are kids and their parents may have a big thing to do, but that's not their fault. I think we should have someplace for them to go instead of here.
Andrew Harris. I live in Riverbreeze Motor Home Park. And as you know, that's one of the worst places in the county due to drugs, homeless people, all that. But whenever the Carley Wall situation happened a couple of months back and everybody got kicked out of there and then we're gonna, they got kicked out of where they thought was a good place to be and now they're going to the benches or wherever and then we're gonna kick them out of there, I don't make much sense to me. And for us to go ahead and kick them out without having a backup plan for them to go anywhere seems sorry for the choice of words, but it seems idiotic. Because I don't see how we can kick people from benches, just benches, and then pretend that we're good people. Whether it's to save face with the town or whatever, mind you, it just don't seem right. I've, I don't know, me living in Riverbreeze, this whole situation has affected me because I'm, I know these people regardless of if I want to or not, I do. I've given bottles of water and granola bars to Jessica Grant and Eric Mastic, I don't know how many times. And I've talked to both of them and they're not bad people. They've had stuff happen to them and they're addicted, right? But that don't mean nothing, really. If you value the people in your town, there needs to be a place for them to go when they feel like they have nowhere else to. And I've called Appalachian and I've gotten, I've talked to them about anything. They've got sixteen rooms and servicing seven counties. So I, I don't know if that was gonna be your plan or what. And I've called JFK Attic Rehab Center close to Asheville. I've called them four or five times over the span of two or three weeks and every single time I've been on hold for over thirty minutes. So if that's, if that's another route, that's not a good one either. And I, I just, what's our county gonna do once we kick them off the benches? Just keep kicking them off the benches? They're gonna go from bench to bench until, what, they get a felony because they racked up enough misdemeanors? It just don't, I don't, it don't sit right with me. And I've got a sixty-nine-year-old grandmother who heard about this situation and started crying because she found out from News thirteen, whenever, most of the people I've talked to that are my age don't know nothing about this. So I don't know, it just seems like the county's trying to hide it. I, I, I just, it makes me sad that this is even an option that we're deciding to take without having anywhere else for them to go. They told me they're right across from the tag office or Main Street.
They do have an office down at where the tag office used to be. If you keep going, they're down on the left.
They have beds by the bar.
There, there is not.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, what is, I mean, what's the plan here? I mean, we're gonna pass ordinance to keep them, prevent them from sleeping on the benches, right? And, uh, we're planning on moving them over. If they're sleeping on the benches, we just, what they're doing is setting up house, are they not? More or less. Okay, then there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that goes along with it. Obviously claw trays and stuff like that, but like you've talked about over here, he's talked about. We need an alternative plan with this, like housing or some kind of homeless shelter or something other like that, that's something we need to be looking into too. I don't, I mean, I agree with this over there. We don't need them sleeping everywhere, you know, that's it. But we need a home or something other more we can, we need to be looking at that too at the same time, same avenue we're doing this right here, you know, that's it. Because, you know, we got problems, I mean, you know, if they're sleeping on the benches, if they got problems and stuff like that over here, goes, and I'm gonna bring this up. David, we had court the other day. We've got syringes in our parking lot right out there. We got pictures of them on our, on my, uh, phone, while I show them to you. But yet, that's a problem we got and stuff like that. And I've had it, so my kid folks over, one of them stayed, staying down here in the dugout down here, sleeping in the dugout at Baltimore. But when he got called, he come back up there, he crawled in my truck or trash truck or and that's where he was sleeping at. But, you know, I try to keep it locked and stuff like that because I don't wanna go out there every morning and find somebody in there, you know, that's it. But yeah, I know we have a problem, the town has a problem here with people and stuff like that, you know, they camp out or they end up, but yet, we don't take care of it. We're gonna have everything else over, we're gonna have a lot of problems with the trash and everything else that goes along. And y'all gonna have to hire somebody else to clean it up, or we, you know? I mean, somebody will, we just can't leave it piled up down there. But I understand that, you know, that's it, but like I said, we need to be looking at the alternative plan to go along with this and this ordinance over here, yes, we're gonna have to do something, you know, that's it, I know we have. That's all I've got.
Yeah, they have to be, you know, a chatty little girl and I, but that's not to be a fact, that's where I come from. You please speak right over to her. I can't. It's almost like a catch-22 that, you know, nobody wants to put somebody in harm's way. But by people becoming in any way remotely public nuisance and I saw it, that all the money that's being spent trying to bring the tourists in, you're gonna push that away, but if the money is there, the tourists are coming in and even like with this new justice center being built, if there are any thought, they're there as far as being able to pick people up and maybe give them a, a way to, to move on from there. But through looking at the grants and the funding and then finding that, that I don't think anybody's trying to harm anybody or to, you know, to create stress for them. But if somebody is there and there are a lot of caring people, if these people need help, help them find it. I've got a friend of mine lives on, like, six hundred dollars a month. He, he lives on social security, but he goes out there and he hustles and he generates, he, whatever he can do to find money and, you know, knows where the food banks are. He goes out and does that and it's almost like it's a job and he makes a point of doing that. And he doesn't understand that a lot of us look at that and think that's extremely admirable that he's doing that. So there are people out there that are in a situation very close to what some of these people are in. And maybe that's where we find some of these people that we can do something, where we got library space when they used to do free lunch over at the library, had people over there. And maybe get some of the people that are in our community and, you know, try and give them mentors to help them move on, so that we kick them out from the bench, but maybe we give them from the bench, we give them a step and they find a place to go, not a step to sleep on, but a step to move on and better their lives and make them find a better place. I, I see what we're doing, but it's, it's just like, yes, if we can get people clearly that wanna be active, we can do that and not see that anybody that's trying to encourage people not to be, uh, setting up a camp, even a small one, is never trying to harm anybody. But there's a lot of things we can do and, and instead of expecting the government to do it, which have been tax dollars, there are a lot of us out here that are willing to do something. And, you know, this time, we can all get out, leave out of here and feel good because we've hit something or maybe we can do something about it. And that's not the town council, the mayor or anybody else figuring out doing that. We wanna do this, we wanna create that. Find a grant, buy a house, you know, put up there and help some people do it. But everybody's heard me run my mouth long enough tonight and, um, you know, brought my son up here because I wanted him to see the process and see what's going on with him. And I appreciate everybody's patience and letting me speak to them.
Would have anybody else that much to speak?
I just wanted to add one more thing. I've got a comprehensive plan that specifically addresses addiction and homelessness in rural communities and I'd be happy to share it with you. And I also have a list of five different grants from emergency solution grants to substance abuse and mental health grants that are projected at the demographic that we're looking at here for rural, smaller communities because it's a totally different ballgame. But if you're, if you're open to it, I'd love to share that with you all. Because like he was saying, I think it's just a much bigger scope than what we've really seen with just the benches.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I'd just like to correct myself, said Appalachian, but Appalachian refers people to Balsam Rehab Center.
Balsam Center, can pay good cash?
Yes, sir. That is what they told me, that is where the sixteen rooms are. And they, and they told me themselves that they have no plan for overflow and if they can't fit more, and they serve a seven county, so there's definitely gonna be sixteen people in there at all times.
But that person has to be willing to go. Especially gets state funded. Not most of them, no. Not, they don't. They do. They can leave at any time. I'm a little bit different than this. I, I'm opposed to a homeless shelter, but I agree with transitional housing because I, if the root of the problem which tends to be substance abuse to mental health isn't fixed, a lot of the people that you see on your benches have a substance abuse problem. So they would not qualify to go into a homeless shelter here. And I will agree with what this gentleman said, they are good people with addictions, but I also don't think that either, and I'm gonna say county and city because I don't live in the city limits, but I do work here every day. I think it is a county and city problem, not just town and not just county. I think until there are more resources out there, it's not gonna help people that are homeless by choice. There have been numerous programs to help a lot of these people that are on your park benches, but I don't feel like anybody should have to sit at Ingalls with their kids and watch somebody use the bathroom out in open phone. I think that's a sanitary issue and it's illegal. I, I guess I'm a little bit different because I feel like I have to provide myself a home and I don't feel like everybody else should have to provide somebody who's able to have a home one out of tax dollars. Helping somebody get on their feet and get past their addictions would be different. So, I mean, maybe some type of group, I guess we don't have enough advocates to put people from down here rock bottom to where they need to be to provide for themselves and that's what we're lacking. But there, if there's homeless shelters, there's a lot of things that come with that, that Grand County is not able to deal with. I mean, with that comes a higher crime rate. You see that happen in Swain County, their prosecutions on minor crimes went up when they opened one. You're gonna see overflow from people coming from the Appalachian Trail because the people that we are seeing on your benches are not people that would qualify to go into a homeless shelter to begin with because they're abusing substances. And they have places to go otherwise if they would just stop using. Um, there's been numerous times, and I, me and Tammy have went to several meetings with this, when you have people on these park benches, they qualify for state benefits, they qualify for housing, but they will not go to the meetings, they won't go to fill out the paperwork for that. They won't go fill out paperwork to get home housing. So there needs to be somebody to advocate for them, but sometimes you have to track them down because not everybody wants a home. But I don't feel like it is every working able individual in this community's place to provide that for them. Maybe to give them a boost and help them to do that for themselves, but not just give it to them. You know, somebody has to help themselves if they really wanna climb out of a hole and I don't think it should be up to everybody else. They have to make the choice to want to do that. But I do think that there's a lot of people in this community willing to help and there's a big push to help people with these addiction problems and substance abuse. It's just getting everybody together to decide what programs to use or what's more beneficial for this area. So you can ask for things and, and have these meetings, but until there's a plan in place that's proposed, there's not gonna be a change on that. But if somebody's homeless by choice, I mean, a homeless shelter will help them. And I know that wasn't, the point of this meeting wasn't a homeless shelter, but that kinda hits home with me because a lot of people work hard, but they wouldn't invite somebody to take a shower in their house or sleep on their beds or in their, on their couches. And if they're not gonna do that because of their substance abuse, they're not gonna qualify for basically a tax paid homeless shelter anyway. So I think that that would cause more harm to our community. But I do agree that they should not be sleeping on these benches. Sometimes I pay money late at night if I'm paying cash bonds. Sometimes I've had to park up here at urgent care because all of our parking's full and I get up there and there's people on the bench up here under this picture. You know, it makes you uncomfortable when you're hoping money back and forth or it's midnight and there's people there, especially people that you deal with, you know, at least the weekly to monthly basis. So I, I think that it is a safety issue. I think something should be done about them being there, especially if it's being disrupted. And if we want to be more appealing to tourists, they're not gonna come here if they can't walk down the sidewalks without somebody being strung out sitting on a park bench. So I think I'm gonna.
Those benches, I remember when we got the grant, uh, the Gullibley, where we sat there about fifteen years ago and stuff like, those benches were set up for the tourists and stuff like that to set and walk down the sidewalk and stuff like that. I don't think it was set up for, you know, for people to sleep on and stuff like that because, you know, that ain't what they were designed for and what they were set up for.
I know I talk quite a bit, but I, my brother is Chris Harris, which I don't, which, I don't know, some people know or whatever, but he's been battling addiction for ten odd years now. I don't see it, it's not as simple as just, I'm gonna quit. Which, I mean, my dad, he, he was a meth addict, he still is a meth addict. It's running my family. So I know from firsthand experience that it's not just a, you wake up in the morning and decide you're gonna quit doing heroin, meth or crack, whatever you do. And it, most people that I've talked to about this with the past couple of weeks, I, I was just a crackhead. Who cares? So I don't, I don't know how willing people are to even want to begin a program like that. And I, I, my brother has, I, I do not get along with him. But anytime he's ever needed, he's always came in the house, took a shower, washed his clothes, whatever he needed, it's been provided for. And I just feel, I, I work and I provide for myself as well. But I can give twenty bucks every now and then to donate at least, you know? You don't have to give thousands of dollars if you're, if you live in town or the county. Just, I just feel like there's not even any avenues for us to even do anything like this. And I don't know, it took until someone got murdered before they even took an interest in Riverbreeze. Before they, before they just, cops get called, they come out twenty minutes later, break up a fight, whatever, leave. They didn't care. I just, I see zero compassion from anybody in the law enforcement. I had a great uncle who a couple of months ago overdosed. And the ca, I, I called the ambulance, they showed up, the officers, who, who are you? Get out of here. I, and I tried to explain myself, but I wasn't able to. They put him in the ambulance, I wasn't allowed to, nothing. And he's my family, my, my grandma seen it, it tore her to pieces because that's her brother, her youngest brother. So it's, I get that you might not want to see that, but regardless, it's what's happening. And I just, I just wish the town felt differently about him. It's not just a, there's a combination of factors with different people, it's different scenarios, every person. Eric Mastic, he was, he went to high school, wrestler, got in a car crash instantly that ruined him. His parents gave him drugs, he don't even know it's wrong. I've talked to him multiple times and I said, Eric, you don't need to be doing the meth, your meth. And wow, he don't know. He, he's been labeled incompetent, but yet no, there's no resources for him. And then Jessica Grant, I understand that many people say that she don't want help, but I feel like she, it's out of, not like, it's pity instead of compassion is what it feels like to most of them. I, I don't know, I wouldn't want pity help. I wouldn't want you to help me just because you feel like it would make you feel better. I would want you to help me because you feel like I'm a person that deserves getting. I would want you to help me because you feel like I'm a person that deserves getting helped. And I don't know, the, I, law enforcement just don't provide that. So if someone was to be sleeping on the benches, they wouldn't, it would not be a gentle effort to get them gone. And I understand, sure, maybe where they can't sleep on them or anything, that's fine. But I guarantee the police officers wouldn't be nice to them about it.
I've just got a question. So if these people that are on the park benches are still allowed to stay on the park benches just by showing hate, how many of them are willing to go there every morning, pick up that bag that has that feces in it, pick up those needles and pick up all their trash? How many of them are willing to help do that? How many of them are willing to help? Help them?
I'll hack up them.
If I had an avenue or if there was an organization, I would be there.
Until we get that avenue of a house or a safe place for them, how many of them are willing to go and pick up that bag of feces? I mean, it's, it's pitiful. The needles, how many of them are willing to do that? Help this town, help them?
I'm not voting for picking that up, but the thing that probably has been missed by many of us here. The gentleman back here that says he doesn't like his brother, his brother don't get along. He still lets him come in, wash his clothes, take a shower. So he's already doing something, he's, he, it's missed on him that he's leading by example. And so if more people were to do that, and if they do have personal contacts with him, instead of attacking people that are trying to make a safer place, find those people that are there. Maybe you know a guy that'll let somebody come over and take a shower. Um, we both know somebody that, she was a, uh, single woman, probably in her forties. Um, met a guy who was homeless and I didn't come over once a week and take stuff. So, but that has nothing to do with the benches. This is, if we get them off the benches, we find this stuff, everybody here just wants to do, get together. You know, it's my place at a little coffee place and tomorrow we all sit and talk and crack them up or something. But this I think is, we've lost sight of, that it's about benches and making beyond what's possible.
Well, it's about making the area safe. It's also about if we continue to let them sleep on the benches, then it's about keeping our kids safe. I mean, I have parents that came to me that don't want to walk the sidewalks because the kids almost pick the needle up. But that's anywhere, that's in Ingalls, that is the bank, that's anywhere you're finding Ingalls.
True.
My dad worked for the OT, they don't like to walk the side of the road now because there's needles. They have gotten stabbed by needles just on the side of the road. You can't walk down to Little Creek and fish anymore because there's needles in there. That's not our area. Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, there's needles everywhere. And you've got to be mindful of where you're at, don't matter if you're in Ingalls. Or, I mean, you can go in the bathroom at Ingalls and see needles. And I don't think a wrecked somebody for sleeping on the bench is the right thing. Yeah, you can come to me, they're just gonna go somewhere else, which most of the time she sleeps under the bridge down there at the hospital. We've given tents, sleeping bags, clothes, shoes, everything. She loses them when she gets high or she sells them or throws them. Her addiction is her main drug. And you can't make somebody not be an addict, it has to be their decision. There needs to be a program to have that. She's got four kids and they're right, and her addiction drives her. So Nana Hayla, this is not even her county. No, man, no, man. What about the offers in her county? Does she, does? She's got family, she's got.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Regardless if she's from Nana Hayla, this is her county. She can be from wherever, it don't matter, she's here now. And I still don't see us kicking people off the benches, how that's gonna keep needles and stuff from popping up. Whenever, it might not pop up next to the benches, but you'll find it next to a tree or on, you know, on the side of the road, wherever. Just because they're not in one localized spot, still don't mean that this won't happen.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Um, I've listened carefully to everything you've said and the story's a little benign for the most part because nobody's getting harmed, but I would like to show something that did happen during the time. I'm in the library a lot and it, and there's a lot of people on that bench out there. One guy came in and he was getting pretty loud and livid. And the librarian went over to him and was telling him to leave quiet down and he wouldn't. And he was getting louder and louder and it didn't hurt. Well, I came over to this, where it was affecting, and when he saw me, I was slowly walking toward him because I felt like being a minute now here to express Mary. He didn't fortunately, he saw me standing there and he decided to leave. And, and Mary had to call the sheriff office. So there's a situation where somebody was, who was sleeping on the bench sometimes comes into the library and creates a bodily threat to one of our citizens. But you got it, you're in it, it's a dumb thought, it's a dumb thought there. You've got, you know, a lot of people not doing anything and yes, they're drunk addicts, but then you have some of these people that have been drunk addicts so long, oh, may I love it, uh, issues, that they become very violent towards citizens. So how do you balance that, both sides of this story? Now, as I understand from the paper, uh, um, the ACLU from some other city in state sent down a, um, a clip, basically the grand pound saying that, uh, they had a lawsuit against some homeless person up there and they got, you know, a huge recovery from it. But we need to look into armed state law. How far can we go without leaving ourselves, uh, stepping over the line, folks do. But then on the other hand, you need to know what we can do to nicely help these people to not be on the benches and creating problems. And I don't know what the solution is, but I think that it may take a little bit of time to study it. So, but I don't know that the board can make a decision right now, perhaps. Uh, perhaps you'd like to take a break on it and then just come back with another meeting later after we look into some of the issues. You know, I'm not happy about these people sleeping on the benches either. Uh, but some of them don't do anything. But it's made our town quite unattractive things that when they're not on the bench sleeping, they're leaving their bags and stuff on to this, so you can tell, you know, it's a homeless spot. You know, it's actually from the truth.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Yeah, is there a remedy maybe as far as maybe not taking them totally off the benches? As they could sit on the benches at different times and just not have their trash and stuff like that? Just like Debbie says, leaving their feces and all of their belongings there. Uh, that Mr. Harris, you know, he is concerned about that. I, I think we all, everybody here has compassion for that person that's there. And we, we want what's best for them. And if they choose, I tell my grandchildren every day to make good choices in their life. Every day when I let them out of school, I tell them I love them and to make good choices. So these people need some guidance. Like Miss Emmons said, if there's something out there, a grant or something that we can get, but just to, to put them totally off, I, it is a sore. I totally agree, it's a sore.
Well, this is the ordinance, this red light's at twenty ten, we're gonna set it up.
Right, and so it, but it, I've seen them sleeping during the day there too, you know. It's, it's fine for them to sit there, just don't be laying there with all of your trash and all of your belongings there because that does deter, deter our, our, uh, you know, the tourists incoming into our county. We have a lot of people, you know, that come in and bring money into our county, which we need. But we've got to look after these people, but I'm like Carissa, I don't think that, uh, you know, we've seen our mental health throughout our states, it's, it has fallen. Uh, there's no help for these people that are addicted because, uh, there's no funding for it. You can have them committed and they, most of the times they beat our, our officers back to the, back to the county before that they can get back. Kenneth can, well, he knows that, I mean, because there's nothing there for mental health right now. And that's really sad.
It is sad, I mean, I was, I was trying not to talk to them, but during this, just taking in what everybody had to say. A lot of, I don't know, I've worked in jails for seven years or more than that, I don't say how many, but you know, going to jail sometimes is their own cause. I mean, I know our jail, says face and toes blue. If you drop below thirty-two degrees, they'll bring them in and we'll give them to a worse status. We pay them good, we, we offer programs, rehabilitation, we work every way we can. We're heading down, they just serve about every day and trying to, trying to get them in the programs and, you know. A lot of them, they wanna get involved in the rehab and they wanna get involved in the going and getting help. This is gonna get them out of court. But just as soon as they get out the door of that jail, they're right back down here by a day.
Kenneth, I've worked for two years trying to get a man housing. He has not got a, he had a felony back in the eighties for drinking. And nobody will rent to him. I got his birth certificate, helped him get his ID, I've done, helped him fill out his paperwork, but nobody will rent to the man. He, he has to pay twenty dollars a day to somebody to stay in their, sleep in their house at night. And that's here in this county.
Yeah, that's sad, I mean, I, I've heard from many people, they love, call over marketing at their friendship house and I've heard a lot of people over there trying to get them help and you know, I still have a lot of compassion on people, I, I, you know, we work real hard to, everybody that comes in there, there's somebody, somebody likes them. But, you know, you go out and you're trying your best to help them and then they turn around and before they get started in the program, and I understand addiction, I've dealt with it for years. And it's not an, it's not easy to get out of it. But you know, burn them, it is life, rehab is life. We drove them, plumb out to the coast in North Carolina to get help.
But they have to be willing to get help.
They have to be willing to accept it. And you know, the main reason I brought this ordinance up is Robin's liberalizing tourism as our beginning. And I wish some of the businesses I worked with, kind of wanted to come and talk about them hanging out in front of establishments or sledding in the tracks and the parking lots. The times they have to come down and shut the alarms off because they fell over in their, you know, set their alarms off because they're out in the rain. I mean, at what point do we draw the line between financial stability of our tourism and helping somebody that has been offered help over and over again? But I understand that addiction draws them back into that line. This is a big, this is a big picture problem. It goes beyond the benches. It goes beyond, I mean, you are a rescue dog, you're like hell. Um, we got grant money, we got people that come into the jail and try to help. You can offer help, but until they're willing to take it, how far can you go with it? Now, my personal opinion, I'm not for a homeless shelter. Because the people that this is directed towards don't want to. You can't, you can't go to a homeless shelter if you're on the bench. If you're gonna bring drugs into their homeless shelter, and I mean, that's, I've walked here to Knox County homeless shelter. And the string process, I don't know if that. I mean, to be honest, if, if it's run right. And, you know, like I said, that's one of the reasons this ordinance came up was a lot of the things on there was, you know, it's hurting their beds. Uh, my brother works in a store down town, took close family friends that own stores in town. And, you know, a lot of their beds just get run off because they're acting the park. It's over.
You said that there was a, there's a, where do we draw the line to protect our tourism? When does that money start getting used to, I, you, you said they can't qualify for a homeless shelter? Which, okay, is there not a, like, a program that we could make in our town with houses or anything?
Yeah, the house town, it's a big league, it's a big, it's a big.
Well, that's why we can use the tourism that we're kicking them off the benches for and direct it towards houses.
That's somebody's way of life, uh, that's just their livelihood, it's their business and it benefits us. I think that having an actual, you know, addiction recovery center is one thing. But you can't take tax dollars, you know, that's.
And I think that just by getting them off the benches too, it's not gonna stop the needles from being places. Like Billy said, it's not gonna stop that and we all know that. But like Miss Emmons says, we've got to do something.
We're not saying that these people don't matter, they do. And I lost a very dear friend to me two years ago to addiction. And it does not matter what family you come from, if you're rich or poor, it does not matter. If it's genetic, if it's from, in his case, it was an ankle injury in football because he played for Montana State University, it does not matter. And I think by the time we put our hearts in the right place, who knows what could happen, but it is, it is something that we need to catch before it gets too out of hand. But we have an industry here, we have, um, a school here, we have children we need to protect and children we need to mold. So if I can't take my children to the playground, you know, because I'm worried that they're gonna pick something up, that's a problem. So I think that like we're all hearing tonight, it is an umbrella of issues. And the more we can come together and talk about grants and talk about funding, um, I know right now about three organizations over in Murphy and a doctor who, who was an addiction counselor. She is just waiting to dump money into a rural branch. So all it takes is a little collaboration, um, it would take help from numerous, you know, congressmen of this area. Um, I, councilmen, sorry. But, um, I think the more awareness that we can shed on this, it'll just have a ripple effect in our community, helping everybody. Um, I don't know how long that would take, but if our hearts are in the right place, then we're on the right track. That's what I feel deeply in my heart, so. I have a, a little different perspective too. This is an ordinance proposed for the benches here in town. One of my concerns is not so much the trash removal effect. I'm worried, when I see these people out on these benches at night and it's raining or it's snowing, how safe are they to be in a town with lots of vehicles, lots of activity? Uh, we had, uh, one guy a few years ago accidentally walked out in front of someone and was run over and killed. These benches are right there near the road, what keeps these?
These benches are right there near the road. What keeps these people safe from their own choice? What keeps them safe?
An ordinance has to enable these benches.
Yes.
Maybe help them find another way to go.
A safer route, a safer route. But that'd be their choice.
You have to watch the city. Go ahead, Ms. Carr. How, why did the county all of a sudden take interest in this? Besides just business owners coming to them complaining? Was that just it? Or was there other motives for the county to finally look into the homeless problem?
Well, as you see, uh, I mean, it just, the numbers can't find it.
Complaints from business owners?
Business owners, parents, from, from visitors coming in. I mean, we, we have incidences that's. They're illegal with things just passing through. And you know, uh, they work down, come back from Minnesota or Chicago or Florida or somewhere like that. Small children go, it's all the truth, like it's sort of, kind of goes under the table, you know. They vandalize, broken their things, those things. I mean, and it's. It's a point where we're a small community, we're close next to you. And for many, many years now, like I say, my brother, that he left out of your house, made you take showers. And I'm just gonna say frankly, the situation is, I've seen, I've seen from both sides, family and working in the jail. The addiction and drugs that's being used now. It's labor. It's, it's, it's getting worse. So it's, it's spreading out and out where the families, thanks to willing, the higher they come in. We got, you know, when they, when the family can put them out, they go to friends and then friends. Can't say that the more they put them out, that's why the, you know, just. Homeless camps, I mean, we know where they're at. We know, you know, who's our, where they're, where they're well, where they're not. Um. And like I say, we're a small community and it's following suit of the bigger places where it's, where it's got out of hand. I mean, I don't know how many of them would go to bed. I mean, everybody goes to big cities and they've got the homeless camps on sidewalks and stuff, but they don't have nowhere to go. And we're talking about cities that have the resources. But they're not qualified to get the resources because it's self-inflicted. It's by tourists that they're there. And without, without like sleeping, sleeping under the rug, yeah, I would. I would, I would. But it's here. It's out, it's out. It's in the town. And I mean, I could drive you around right now and show you places that. I mean, it's for eighty dollars. And what's that? I mean, and you know, this ordinance is not against them by no way. It's trying to salvage the biggest companies and save their revenue so that they can pay the taxes so that these programs are effective. Big picture. Only help these businesses work more, help them by providing more resources. And you know, it's been well established, there's no answer to that. It's an issue that spreads out and reaches the whole community, the whole United States with them, it's the same thing. We're a small community. We always have it all together. Does something?
Go ahead, Ms. Carr. City doesn't want to do something constructive. Wouldn't, if something happened with the tourists or one of the locals, wouldn't that leave the city under a police obligation? It can't be, wouldn't somebody come in and say, well, the city failed the act? So wouldn't it be anybody's best interest that the city did try to somehow curtail these people from living on those benches?
I don't have any case to hold, man.
What, action liability to municipalities, municipality that has an act of not preparing sidewalks. Waves and, you can say, rights and sidewalk community involved. You can attach liability to an act you don't respect unless the town did something to prevent it. So. This is that kind of situation.
Go ahead, Ms. Carr.
And what, what's the difference between them sleeping, does this, I didn't, can I get one of them papers?
Here.
Does this ordinance prevent people from sleeping under the bridges?
No, this is directly.
But what's the difference between people sleeping on the benches at night and people sleeping under the bridges at night? Sure, they're not open, people can't actively see it. But if they're getting kicked off, if people want to protect their kids and people are getting kicked off the benches and Jessica Grant, her option is to go under the high school bridge. I feel like that's not entirely protecting your kids. And you can put her in jail and whatever, but that's still not gonna help.
Help her, feed her, give her medical treatment, whatever.
I just don't see how this one reason, like one way to prevent losing money is gonna stop this other way from, like, I don't know, man. It's frustrating and I can't get the words out.
Honestly, all that is, it's a little landscape of people.
Pretty big?
Pretty big.
I just wanted to address one thing I could, can, clear on this. Um definitions, um A1. It does indicate um bridge, alley or alleyway, hands, plazas, all that. So it isn't included in that.
Unless it's defined in public places.
Well, that's the definition of what the ordinance is, reference, isn't it?
You read six.
Clean ground.
There's no personal effects. You're not, you're sleeping in public streets of Old County, roundway, you can't enter other structures. Located in the uncore, only public streets of Old County, roundway, pointing out, looking out instead of.
I'm in, I'm in agreement with you. I was just pointing out that it did cover.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all. I'm just saying that it wasn't, it was something that's left out. And I think it's a great first step. Um appreciate you guys on this. Um, we've got to take care of schoolwork and stuff, so we'll find our own mistake, but um. I like the format here. I appreciate everybody's putting their time and everybody coming out and having their stake. We don't like to agree, but it's nice to be part of.
And I, I believe we're all, I believe everybody in here got.
Something needs to be done, but.
Something needs to be done, but I mean, as a as down in Robbinsville, I mean, I don't know, no. Well, we can do it.
Can you not get it with this evidence here and uh try to talk, see if we can get something started or something other, you know? But I'm, you know, I'm agreeing with the ordinances over here, you know, the tend to say. Like I said, they were put here for people to walk and up and down the street to sit on.
Yeah.
Not to sleep on during the day with trash and everything else. I mean, I can't help that by me. That's what we got the grants for and stuff like that, what we got. That's fifteen years ago. Do better.
Just add one last thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I manage the community garden under the Church Mount Ministries and there's a beautiful learning landing there. And it has lots of, you know, it's set up for an outdoor classroom and she was sleeping there for, for some time. And there was trash everywhere and, you know. I walked over to her and I said, you know what, I'm not gonna call the police. I'm not gonna tell you to leave, but could you please at least clean up after yourself? And I handed her a trash bag. And she didn't do it. So, you know, yes, these beautiful benches are set up, but again, there's gotta be accountability. If she's gonna be doing what she's doing and not cleaning up after herself, then that's a different story. So I agree with it. And, you know, all the rest will take some work, but.
What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
This is for the public, sir.
I mean, you're the mayor, you know, that's it.
Thank you all for taking the interest in that. I, I don't feel like it's the town's responsibility to provide a place for criminal activity to take place after hours.
I appreciate everybody's input, everybody's thoughts and it's great to support.
Go ahead, Ms. Carr. What about Riverbreeze? Is there anything gonna happen to, do y'all know?
No, we just probably outside the city limits.
It's outside the city limits. I, I don't know. I, I personally think it's took too long for the county to do something. Which is why we're in the situation we're in now. It, I don't know, it took until it was your guys' problem before y'all noticed. Riverbreeze has been like that for going on ten odd years now. I've lived there on and off for ten years. Go there during the summer, spring break when I was little. I lived there full-time taking care of my grandma. Like seeing people on the side of the road or walking down Riverbreeze on whatever they're on. But then again, I s, I don't know. I know everybody feels differently about this. I, I, I just feel it's morally the wrong. And it more or less just feels like kicking the can down the road. Just because sure, they're not gonna be on the benches, but I still don't understand what's gonna stop them from going anywhere else. They're not gonna be on the side of the street. What's gonna stop them from being behind businesses? Sleeping in dumpsters, whatever, wherever they can go. I just feel like this one fix is just gonna lead to another problem. Unless we come up with something besides just kicking them off the benches and putting them in jail. And I personally feel like the county's not really thought that through, besides just, oh, it looks bad. We can't let the tourists think that we've got homeless people. Everywhere's got homeless people. New York, if people go to New York City, they can see a homeless person and I'm coming back. I did, I don't know. I just feel like you're, it's not seeing them as homeless people anymore and more as a nuisance. And people aren't nuisances regardless of what they do, who they are, whatever minds you.
But when they break the law, sorry to interrupt, but when they break the law and they make people toxic things that can harm others, then yes, that's a totally different.
But not all of them are doing that. We all know one person that we've all talked about. But I've not heard any other names. The only person that we've really been talking about is Jessica Grant. And that's it.
But I don't think anybody's gave names out of respect with that person. But I can tell you, this is just through work. I have tried to help several people that sleep on our benches. Kenneth has, sometimes the, the county will provide them meals. I've stopped, I've bought somebody a meal in his hand. I've gave it to them, give them bottles of water when it's hot. It's not just one person, but I, I don't want to blast everybody's name that I've had to deal with in the last ten years over this issue because I don't feel like it's fair to that person. Now, whether or not I've dealt with that specific end of people or not, I won't say that before, but I will say that you said that because of domestic violence, there's nowhere to go. We do have a shelter that, in, in this area, it's in Cherokee County. And the advocate drives over here, she's been over here all week this week because of our domestic violence victims. When those orders are in place, they can get granted a home, they can get granted a car, their pets, vehicles. And sometimes they just, they choose not to follow through with that. Now, I will agree with you that even if somebody has an addiction that's sleeping on this park bench, not allowing that is not gonna keep them from having that addiction. Ultimately, I've dealt with people in several different ways, like when, when I worked at the detention center. When they come in, sometimes they're out of their mind. They're talking things you could not believe. Even some people that you've mentioned today threw blood in my face right out probably eleven years ago. I'm not saying that they're a bad person. I'm, I feel like they miss treatment. But I also don't feel like my six-year-old should see somebody use the bathroom and I go to buy my groceries. And I feel like especially at nighttime, there's really no businesses that are open. A majority of your criminal activity is happening from ten to seven. That's involving certain people jumping out in front of cars as they go through town, beating on people's windows. And it's terrifying. And if somebody doesn't live here, when they visit the mountains, they don't go to this serene place. They, they don't want to think that they're in backwoods about to be mugged in, in rural America. I mean, but I agree with you on the fact they are people and sometimes they're very good people, but their addictions have taken over their lives. They need help getting back on track. But I don't think that the people in the community should have to firsthand see the things that follow along with their addictions and some of their behaviors. I mean, a lot of people in Robbinsville, I mean, alcohol was a big thing for a long time. A lot of people don't want their kids to see them drink, so they don't drink in front of their kids. I don't want my children to be exposed to people who are high, walking around, talking out of their mind. It scares my children. But I also feel like they are a valuable person that needs help, they need treatment. But unfortunately, until all the entities involved get together for a plan. I mean, it's not just gonna be this meeting or it's not just gonna be a meeting with the coalition. It's not just gonna be a meeting with the county commissioners or the sheriff's office or the clerks. It has to be everybody coming together. And addiction does not discriminate. It, it can happen to anybody. I mean, there's people who spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get their family members treatment. Down to somebody who doesn't have hardly anything that goes to court-appointed treatments or through the dark program. And if somebody doesn't wanna help themselves. And if somebody doesn't wanna help themselves, uh, you, you can't help someone that won't help themselves. All you can do is give them the tools to try to do better. But I don't feel like in the process, and I know this is a meeting on benches, but it's a lot more than that. Um, from, in District Thirty, we have, isn't it one state-funded facility for mental health? In the VA Health System, which is one eighty-two. But a Haywood and what was the Boston Center. It's right past thirty, uh, he might be thirty big. But then again, we're a small county. It's hard for us to make a difference in our state. It's hard for us to get resources that we need to ultimately help a person do better, to get them off the park. But I still don't want my kids subjected to that every time I drive into town.
Um, I understand that this is, with, is an impasse kind of situation here. But I... What's gonna stop these people when they get kicked off the benches from going back to Riverbreeze? Is there any, i- is there anything the county can do to stop that? So, more or less, kicking them off the benches. I, I know it might be unfair for me to just be, but it's gonna end up affecting, maybe not you guys. But it's gonna be exactly like it was a year ago in Riverbreeze and you're, you might not want your kids to see that. But my little sister's gonna see that. They might not be doing it in town, but they'll be doing it in Riverbreeze where my little sister, me, grandma, my dad and my stepmother live. I just feel it's unfair to be, eh, not my problem. Which this is what it feels to me. Because like I've said multiple times already, it's took until now before the county's decided to do anything. This ain't nothing new. I just think it's a little pitiful that our town decides to do something only once it affects our pockets. Once we have business owners complaining, that's when we decide to do something. I get we can, when we arrest them, we can offer rehab and whatever, but there's more to it than just offering them that.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think that was that if you're from any... Um... You said you don't want it back to Riverbreeze. But it's okay in time where everybody else is paying the taxes. Um, the resources have been available for place eleven or twelve years. But I know I'm the one that... Resources are available. Other than the place to sleep. Because addiction and all that has been available. Um... It's... It's a, it's a wide, wide, uh, problem, man. Issue that's stemmed back to... The issue of drugs. Okay, you don't want it in your house. They, they fly here trying to make a honest living. Don't want it interfering with their business. Resources are available to help.
But all the resources we provide, send them away from here. And I personally, if I...
Not that certain, not that certain.
What do we offer?
Um... Counseling. The program we run through the jail, they offer god placement. They offer, they'll find them out, they'll offer them cell phones, they... But to get that, they have to be drug approved. They have, they have to pay drug terms and... I understand that drug addiction is a hard thing. But that's step one, is ready.
That's something we don't have here at Free Town because you guys have doctors, medical teams for our own. They, they can't just... Be anywhere.
Yes, sir.
And you might have full-on medical to deal with somebody that is coming off of a teeny drug.
Yeah, you're, you're a prodigy of the choir, old man. I, I won't get any much pill on that part of it, but... It, it, it is. It's a, it's not an overnight fix. It's not a six-month fix. It's not a year fix. It's a long-term lifetime battle that they're gonna face and hear all that. But they have, they will like the first state. Their cell is available if they'll take the first state. And, you know, that's not, there's no way that City Robbinsville is gonna put a dent in that cross. But we're willing to join up with anybody that's willing to have it.
Well, directly for which, and we took this to the joint mission two years ago. Which was a state representative and Congresswoman. And, but still... People say they don't help, but putting that foot forward and actually doing anything. It's more... And we do have Celebrate Recovery every Monday night. We have that and some hills up there. It, it's, it's a start. It's, it's a big start, but... This is, this affects probably every family in Red County and all of Western Front Line, probably the whole United States. But having our eyes open to...
We have Scotty comes up. He has service with the, with the jail and he has, we've got... Self-protection to come to the jail and, you know, they all have the resources, but they got it back. So, I mean, I think, I think this is just a tip of iceberg on the solution, or I don't have a solution. We gotta have the resources. We gotta have, we gotta have the small businesses. It's hard enough to have the small businesses when you can't, it's hard enough to make it, to make a living. And even good business. You know, and... We're thinking, we wanna stop with your business because the business from your... When you bring your restaurants, got tents out of it and trash thrown everywhere. I mean, I don't, I don't attract people who wanna stop it. So... It, it's gonna take a lot, a lot of thought and a lot of considerations. I don't know. I was hoping, like I say, the people can kind of give, give opinions, but... That we keep kind of a solution. Tonight, we're gonna have to really think about this. But I do appreciate everybody, um, giving, giving your opinions and speaking halfway and saying all this.
Anybody that likes to live there, know me, follow me, it'll be fun.
I'm gonna leave this pad over here 'cause it would be... The town could rely on y'all to maybe further help out.